Five forty-five and we are going to call the regular meeting of the Lucium High Unified School District Board of Education for Tuesday, September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three to order. Let the record reflect that all board members are in attendance. I need a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
I move we adopt this evening's agenda. Second?
Motion by Mayor, second by Santos. Roll call vote please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Bernier?
Yes.
Make your time.
Ms. Candell?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. We do have minutes to approve from the August twenty-second regular board meeting. Would any member of the board like to amend those? Seeing none, I entertain a motion for adoption of the meetings, the agendas, the minutes from eight twenty-two.
I move approval of the minutes from August fifth, two thousand and twenty-three.
August twenty-second.
Oh, excuse me, twenty-second. Thinking of today. Second?
Motion by Martin, second by Mayor. Roll call vote please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Bernier?
Yes.
Ms. Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Fam?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. Which brings us to closed session. If any member of the public would like to comment on closed session agenda items, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment and move to adjourn to closed session where we're going to discuss conference with the legal counsel, anticipated litigation, conference with labor negotiators, public employee discipline, dismissal, release, complaint, and student discipline. We are adjourned to closed session at five forty- It is seven P M. and we are going to reconvene the regular meeting of the Lucium High Unified School District Board of Education to order. The board has been in closed session since five forty-six P M. and we have nothing to report out. It is my pleasure, we have students with us tonight for the flag salute and for the representatives to the board, so we're going to kick it off first with our flag salute. I'll turn it over to Dr. Fawcett.
All right, thank you President Stewart. And I'd like to invite Vaughn Wiegand up to the mic. And Vaughn, before you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I'm going to say a few nice words about you that your principal gave to me, okay? All right. So Vaughn Wiegand is a third grade student at Harlow Elementary. Vaughn is an excellent student with a great character, leadership skills, and work ethic. Vaughn is well-liked by his peers and is always looking for opportunities to support other students. Last year, Vaughn and his younger sister, I'm at Harlow, were principal of the day for the school. Vaughn performed many duties that day, including morning announcements, distributing Roadrunner rewards, assisting the principal and vice principal with supervision, and dismissing the entire cafeteria on his own, following all the PBIS expectations. Very cool. The most impressive part of the day was when he demonstrated his leadership skills, when fifth and sixth grade students responded to all the directions and all the requests for appropriate behavior while exiting the cafeteria. Harlow is so proud to have Vaughn represent our school and lead the flag salute for the Board of Education tonight. Thank you so much for being here Vaughn. It is now your turn to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and liberty and justice for all.
Well done. And now it gives me great pleasure to introduce our student representatives to the board to give us a snapshot of the great things that are happening in our campuses to kick off this new school year. And in no particular order, first up will be Katie Sloco from Central Coast New Tech.
Hello everyone, it is so nice to see all of you. I have already had the pleasure of meeting many of you before. My name is Katie Sloco and I'm a senior and I'm also ASB president of Central Coast New Tech. I'm so excited to give you a few updates on the culture, community, academics, and extracurriculars at New Tech. First, as part of my job as ASB president, I was tasked with picking a theme for the school year. Our school theme guides our learning and growth as a student body and influences our school's planned events. The theme I chose for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year is a year of cheerfulness, bring the joy. This theme is supposed to inspire students to participate in our activities and show their school spirit. It also promises that ASB will help create fun school events while promoting mental health and students' wellbeing. The second line, bring the joy, is a personal challenge to us all, to choose to bring a little bit more positivity to campus despite the challenges that we may be facing. Something that is so unique and wonderful about New Tech is our culture. We're known for our strong community, kindness, and acceptance. We start to build this culture even before the students step foot on campus their first day. During the summer, our ASB, led by Mrs. Greco and Link Crew, led by Mr. James, meet at our leadership retreat to bond as a class and plan our beginning of the year events. Afterward, our Link Crew held our annual new student orientation and beach night where all of our students and ninth graders get to know each other before the first day of school at the beach with student leader-led games and food. The first two days of school, known as our culture days, are our first big event as a school. Students travel around campus doing workshops on our pledge and playing games while getting to know their class and advisories. We have two big rallies, and this year our teachers had a very competitive game of musical chairs, which our principal, Mrs. Butler, won. Our students have since been enjoying more lunchtime activities like water balloon toss, chalk drawing, and musical chairs. We have many more fun events coming up, including our club fair, dodgeball intramurals, and student birthday celebrations. Our ASB is also planning a senior sunrise, the homecoming dance, fall feast, and our student senate in October. So now onto our community and academics. New Tech had its annual back-to-school night last week where parents could walk their student schedules and learn more about their classes, which was very successful. We also have a dine and donate fundraiser at Brooks Burgers coming up on September twelfth from four P M. to seven P M. to raise money for CCNTH Leadership. Now on to academics. We invite all of you to attend our event nights and join our project panels this school year to see project-based learning in action. Please talk to our principal, Mrs. Butler, about participating. The first opportunity is our annual math art night on November sixteenth from five thirty to seven thirty P M. This year we have ninety-two amazing new freshmen who come from all around the Central Coast, from San Luis Obispo to Orca in Guadalupe. Our ninth graders are now working on their This Is Me project, combining their research and communications, world studies, biology, Spanish, and English classes to learn more about themselves and what makes them unique. The students then present this information in front of the entire ninth grade class as their first presentation at New Tech. Our tenth graders are busy in their American Studies class where they're starting to learn about the American Revolution through the lens of the popular musical Hamilton. This was definitely one of my favorite projects at New Tech. Our juniors have just started their Do Something About It project. In this project, they choose an important issue that they want to change in our community, researched it, and proposed how to create positive change for people in our local government. Last year I did my Do Something About It project about developing more teacher training centered around mental health in our district, and I got to pitch my ideas to the district's social and emotional learning specialists. Lastly, New Tech's counselor, the amazing Mrs. Ortiz, and our awesome career center tech, Mrs. Oxner, are helping our seniors prepare for their life after New Tech with college and career prep. They've organized a college application night on September twenty-eighth. We are also very proud of our senior class for their continued dedication to upholding New Tech's pledge and their academic accomplishments. Our New Tech seniors scored top in the district for math, science, and E L A on the state test last year. Ninety-one percent of our senior class met or exceeded the English Language Arts standard, forty-four met or exceeded the math standard, and seventy percent met or exceeded the science. We are so proud of this class and know that they will help keep our one hundred percent graduation rate. Lastly, all of our fall sports, band, and theater have started. All these extracurriculars have very high participation from CCNTH students, and we are always excited to cheer them on. I would really like to thank my leadership advisors, Mrs. Greco and Mr. James, for their constant support, as well as the incredible Mrs. Butler. Thank you so much to listening to my first board report. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you Katie. Next up representing alternative education is Rebecca Rizzo.
Good evening, board and attendees. I'm Rebecca Rizzo and I'm happy to represent Lopez High School this semester along with my classmate Gabriel Lopez, who is in the audience. This school year Keith Gladhill joined our staff as vice principal of alternative education and Victor Franco joined as campus security. To kick off the school year, the local chapter of P O E International hosted a breakfast for all of the alternative education staff. They're a community service organization focused on helping women attend college, but they have graciously adopted our school and support our students in a variety of ways like P D A organization would. Our cosmetology career pathway students enjoyed a guest learning session by Erica Herrera from Glass Box Salon. The students are also excited to visit the new learning salon lab right now outside these doors. They will be taking a field trip next week to do so. This Thursday, we will hold our first community day from twelve to twelve-thirty. These events are a fun time for us, for students and staff to get to know, to get to know each other and participate in activities together. We will host a field day with basketball, soccer, cornball, bocce ball, frisbee, group games, and art creation. Food service will be, will provide a special barbecue tri-tip lunch. Stop by if you would like to join us. We just opened our wolf market as one of face of promoting a positive learning environment. When students demonstrate being ready, being respectful, and being a learner, they can earn rewards from the wolf market. You can check it out on the Lopez website. From our school, for our school garden, a new crew of students who have never gardened before are clearing weeds and getting the raised beds ready to plant arugula, snap peas, kale, salad greens, beets, carrots, radishes, cilantro, and edible flower mix and flowers that attract pollinators. In just a few weeks at harvest, we should have the makings of a salad bar like we did last year. P D A held a back-to-school night on Wednesday, August sixteenth. Several new students and families along with returning ones got a chance to meet their teachers, pick up a Chromebook, and get their questions answered. Some of the high school students have a blended schedule combining their online independent study with an in-person class at one of our other great high schools in the district to cover our specialized subjects not offered on ingenuity. That's all the news for now, thank you for, thank you for your support. We look forward to a successful and rewarding new school year.
Thank you Rebecca. Next up from A G High School is Kayla Sessena.
Good evening, my name is Kayla Sessena and I'll be serving as this year's ASB president of Aurora Grande High School and school board representative. I'm so excited to share you monthly reports on what's happening inside and outside of the classrooms on campus. The first thing I'd like to discuss is our leadership program we have and what we've been doing to serve our students. Our three leadership classes have been busy building school spirit and pride. Before, before school started, Link Crew hosted our annual freshman orientation where ninety-four percent of the freshmen participated. The Link Crew class is currently preparing to serve a hundred-foot-long banana split to the freshman class by two soliciting donations and publicizing this event. ASB has been busy building school spirit by encouraging involvement in the Blue Zoo at home games slash matches and building and encouraging students to join clubs and start one if they wish. Our in-class has relaunched the student of the week program and have begun celebrating groups on campus like newspaper, F F A, and drama. Just today, our three leadership classes worked together with Nopomo High School and Paulding Middle School by bringing in Scott Babalovich from Involved Leadership from Training or for training. It was important to learn, sorry, I lost my spot, is we learned about the importance of our service and how to work together as a team. Currently, we are working on planning our annual kindness week where we celebrate kindness towards others and as well as ourselves. Each day we focus on a different group to show gratitude. For example, next Monday, we'll be writing notes of appreciation to our local first responders as it is the anniversary of nine eleven. Later that week, we'll be sharing words of wisdom with our elementary school students as well as sending gratitude notes to former elementary school teachers. Next, I'd like to share with you updates of our clubs and programs. Clubs are back on campus and beginning to meet weekly. A few groups I'd like to mention are F F A, Band and Color Guard, Students for a Better Community, and Give Back Two Fifty. A G H S F F A put in a busy summer showing livestock and has now begun hosting their weekly activities on Wednesday at lunch to celebrate and include more students. Our Band and Color Guard have been hard at work since even before school, starting with fan camp, and now have performed three times at our home football games. Students for a Better Community recruited helpers to support Ryan's Ranch Run this weekend to, to raise funds for Seventeen Straw. And our Give Back Two Fifty continues to grow. Many students have already reached out to submit hours they've earned over summer in an attempt to earn an honorary graduation cord. Now in academics, A G H S has welcomed twelve new teachers this year. Link Crew will be hosting a new teacher luncheon later this week, sharing tips with our newest Eagles. One newest Eagle is Ms. Valenti, who teaches cosmetology. Her students are so excited to have the C T, C T E program on campus. Our Career Center is busy looking, booking college visitations with Gonzaga, Portland State, and Cal Poly Slow, all scheduled to be on campus in September. C S F membership will be rolling out soon for students who show both rigor in the classes as well as strong grades. Seniors will take part in their first of three senior meetings in a few weeks while they'll, while they're here, details regarding senior portrait deadlines, caps and gowns, and other exciting news. Finally, in athletics, as I previously mentioned, our school spirit has been growing through the roof. The attendance at our football games has been awesome and continues to grow. According to our athletic director, we have nearly four hundred student athletes participating this season in seven sports, including cheer. Our cross-country team just hosted the Greg, the Greg D Nike Big Ditch Classic this weekend, and the team is larger than it has been in recent years. We are still early in fall season of athletics, so at next month's meeting, I'll make sure to update you on our league standings and outstanding matches for our Eagles. Thank you so much for letting me speak at this meeting. I look forward to sharing with you next month of the amazing things we do on campus. Thank you.
Thank you Kayla. And from Nopomo High School, we have Savannah Willett.
Hello, everybody. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Savannah Willett. I'm currently a senior at Nopomo High School and I'm this year's ASB executive president. Today I came here to present this report detailing a diverse array of activities and initiatives that have unfolded on our campus in recent weeks. The return of our Titans to campus and the addition of the class of two thousand and twenty-seven have filled our community with joy and anticipation. At the heart of our campus culture is a deep appreciation for celebrating the accomplishments of our student body leaders and athletes. Prior to the commencement of the school year, we marked the return of our Titans at our annual roundup event. During this gathering, students had the opportunity to have their pictures taken, collect their schedules, and register for ASB cards, P E attire, and Titan merchandise for the upcoming two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year. This event exemplified the vibrant spirit of our school community, manifesting in the spirit pursuits of our sports teams and the collective embrace of Titan pride. These aspects reflect our unwavering commitment to nurturing an atmosphere that is safe, inclusive, and inspiring for all members of our community. Our dedication to these values underscores the foundation of our school's achievements. On August eighteenth, our football team embarked on their inaugural match of the season. Though they encountered formidable opponent, opponent in the Slow Tigers and ultimately did not score, secure a victory, our Titans exhibited tremendous dedication, passion, and love for both the sport and our school. In similar vein, our girls volleyball team, girls tennis team, boys and girls water polo teams, cheerleading squad, and cross-country runners have commenced in their respective seasons. The spirit of our student club, Mount Olympus, is palpable as they are eager to rally on to support our Titans in their endeavors. The second day of the school year brought with its time-honored tradition the annual welcome-back rally orchestrated by our ASB class. The spirited event united our entire student body, counselors, administrators, and staff members. Engaging in trivia games were conducted, providing a platform for the, for the introduction of our leadership classes to the broader student community. Anticipation and excitement filled the air as our campus community came together in unity. This month, we're also planning our homecoming dance and our homecoming spirit week. We also have many other sports games and things going on on campus I will be sure to report out next month. And looking forward, I'm filled with enthusiasm for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year and the opportunities it holds, and I'm eager to represent our school each month as I provide updates on our progress and the activities we put on. Your time and unwavering support are greatly appreciated, and I extend my heartfelt thanks on behalf of our entire school community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. It really is a highlight for us to have you, have you in the boardroom with us once a month to tell us all the great things that are happening on our campus. So we also know that it's a school night, so you're welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to sort of to head out if you'd like as well, and we'll see you in October. Now we're going to move on to items of interest from the board. What's the board number?
I will go.
Ms. Martin?
Before you guys go, Nopomo, A G got your comeback for you. I know you lost in football to Slow, but A G claimed them on Friday with a thirty-five to three win. So they were just being a brother-sister for you and did their job, so congratulations A G and I hope Nopomo thanks you for the good job you guys did.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Mayor?
So I just want to share my visit to Paulding back to school night last Wednesday. It was fabulous, and I want to do a shout-out to Miners Hardware. My grandson is in Mr. Heckman's advisory class, it's also his math teacher, very impressed. Mr. Heckman was thrilled that they picked a mascot this year that's not an animal. It's Heckman's High Tech Hamburgers. That's their class mascot. So my grandson and I were at Miners yesterday, and there was an inflatable hamburger this big in the barbecue section. And I told Jackson, I said, we have to get that hamburger for your class for advisory. So we looked all over for one that was for sale, and there wasn't one. So we went and talked to one of the clerks that was there, who turned out to be the manager, and explained to her why we were interested in this hamburger, and they donated it to his class, and he took it today. So shout-out to Miners, a shout-out to Paulding. Back to school night was fabulous. We went to every single class. There's no time during passing for any messing around. They don't have time for any of that. Teachers were so welcoming, their explanations of their classes and their, their person, who they are, their families. It was just wonderful, very exciting.
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. Any other board members? Ms. Candell?
Yes, I, I attended the back-to-school night for the adult transition program, and it was really wonderful to see some new facilities there and, and of course, our impressive staff. And that was really fun to go there. And then I had intended to go from there to the Nopomo Elementary back-to-school night, but they had such a turnout, there was no parking for blocks and blocks. So I wasn't able to attend, but I'm thrilled that they had so much participation. So I look forward to going to some more events this, this week.
Thank you, Ms. Candell. Any other board members? Seeing none, we'll turn it over to the superintendent for the superintendent's report, Dr. Fawcett.
Thank you President Stewart. It is back-to-school night season, and I just want to give a quick shout-out to all of our staff. They put a lot of planning and energy and effort into setting up really meaningful experiences for, for all the parents and families that were able to make it out on the campuses. They were full, like trustee Candell was sharing, there was hardly anywhere to park on the majority of the campuses, so thank, I thank the community too for the outstanding support and coming out to see what our schools are doing. It's an important partnership. I also want to celebrate a couple of our schools who've just recently received awards. So a number of our elementary, middle, and high schools applied for the Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Award, and basically what this is, is it's a focus that the schools have on explicitly teaching expected behaviors to students, so they know how to positively engage in their environments, both academically and socially on campuses. They acknowledge and reinforce expected behaviors, they intervene early, they set up multi-tiered systems of support, all the way from level one through level three, going from least intensive and taught across the classroom to most intensive where there's actually some pull-out services and individualized instruction for students. And then they monitor the progress throughout the year so they can see whether they're having an impact on the student behaviors on campus. And there were seventeen schools across the county that received these awards, and five of those schools were our schools, and they did a phenomenal job. And so Harlow Elementary School received a bronze medal. Mesa Middle School and Nopomo High School both received silver medals, and Grover Heights and Dorothea Lang both received gold medals. Outstanding achievements, and they're representing our school district very well. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fawcett. That, that's great news to share, thank you for that. Yeah. So which turns us to the business of the district. As a reminder, any member of the public may comment on agenda items as each item is presented. If you wish to address the board, please complete a speaker card, they're located in the back. The blue speaker cards for items that are not on this evening's agenda, and the yellow ones are for items that are on the agenda. And non-agenda items will, will appear at the end of the meeting. Speakers are normally limited to three minutes apiece or less, and we limit total public comment per item to twenty minutes per item as well, so that's part of the board policy. We also have translation services available for our, our Spanish-speaking audience or members of the public. So if you need Spanish translation services, please let us know, and we have that provided for you. And then finally, on the last page of the agenda, you'll please just read the decorum expectations and the disruption of meetings process. Basically, we, we expect everybody to behave like we would in a classroom, and if the students were here as well, or I often say, or if you're at Grandma's Sunday dinner, right? So, and with that, we turn to the consent calendar, items one through eleven. Would any member of the board like to pull an item for discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on consent calendar items one through eleven, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close it to public comments and bring it back to the board for comment. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move approval of the consent calendar action items one through eleven.
Motion by Martin, second by Mayor. Roll call vote please.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Bernier?
Yes.
Ms. Candell?
Yes.
Ms. Santos?
Mr. Stewart? Aye.
Thank you, motion passes.
Thank you. Which brings us to reports and presentations, resolutions, proclamations, item number twelve, a report of the secondary student achievement. Ms. Dixon?
Thank you President Stewart. Ms. Smith is going to take this report, she's making her way up, she has arrived. Looks like summer institute's first, we have to go backwards.
That is last, last meeting, one second.
Is it possible to turn the mics up? I mean, the mics?
The speakers, the mics?
Whatever.
It's on the desktop actually.
Yeah, the speakers, we just can't get them. It kind of has them back.
Right up there.
The speakers are directional, so they, they pour into the audience, so if we turn those up, it'll have an impact over here. We're working on getting some additional speakers above the board. So actually we'll project-
We still need our board members to be able to hear the present, presentation, and frankly, with the students here before, it was very difficult to hear them.
Test.
Use your classroom voice.
Oh, I, I don't, I don't know that you've ever had trouble hearing me personally. I thought that was just a general statement. Are we ready? Okay. With that, I am pleased to be here this evening to talk to you about secondary student achievement. I do want to say I've been a teensy bit winded today, so if I stop and take a couple of deep breaths, I'm not confused and don't read too much into it, I just have something pushing on my lungs. So here we go. Secondary student achievement. We're going to talk about some really specific indicators tonight. Of course, these are not the only indicators for our secondary class students, but these are some good ones that we're going to dive into today. That includes graduation rate, their A through G completion, or U C C S U eligibility. With that specifically diving into the area of math, we're going to look at our advanced placement or A P participation, some dual enrollment numbers, the percentage of students that are C T E completers or participating in C T E courses. Grades is still a great indicator, so we'll take a quick look at that. And also our F A S P A completion numbers, which knew this year it was actually required to have our seniors complete the F A S P A. So digging into some of that data, we're going to look at our district graduation rates. So as a whole, this continues to be a really strong point for us as Lucium High. This year so far, we have ninety-four percent of our students as graduated. So it's important to understand that this number goes up, and it's not uncommon for us to swoop in more kids as the semester goes on. So students actually have the ability to finish up any coursework between, you know, June, when we technically did this graduation data, through the summer, and even all the way through Christmas, through that first semester, they can finish their graduation requirements and then still graduate with their comprehensive high school or Lopez High School or wherever it was. So we expect this number to go up, it's not unusual, but it's already at a really great point. So let's talk about U C and C S- So let's talk about UC and CSU completion. So we're going to dig into this, specifically the requirements and what students are meeting them. But it's important to know about these kids, like where do they go? What's happening after? And this has been, I think, a common question. So we're pleased to let you know, kind of like a sneak peek here, that we'll be coming back to you with some data from the National Student Clearinghouse to help us see, like, are we being successful preparing our kids? These kids that are qualified, where are they going? Are they staying in? What degrees are they earning and that sort of thing? And we'll have some longevity information to bring to you coming soon. So with that, let's look at our current A through G eligibility. So we refer to this commonly as A through G, or you help me say UC CSU requirements. So those are the requirements to get into the UC system or the CSU system within California. So at the far right-hand side, if you're not familiar with the system, you can see by subject, they're going A through G, hence the name. So I need two years of history at a minimum, four years of English, three years of math. And you can see how the fourth year is gray, kind of, because that's highly recommended. Two years at least, a third recommended of laboratory sciences, two years of foreign or world languages, as we call it now, at least one year of a VPA or Visual Performing Arts, and then one elective at minimum. So on the left-hand side, we can see this is overall as a district. It's some very clean numbers here. About forty percent of our students are meeting the full A through G UC CSU eligibility requirement. Sixty of them are not at this point. So we have some work to do, as always, there, making sure that our students are college and career ready. But it's a really nice number start as a starting point for this year. So looking into that, we're going to dig specifically into Area C, which is math. So remember, I said Area C is math. Three years are required, four years are recommended. We're just going to look at what students or what percentage students met Area C specifically within that UC CSU requirement, the three years. So a typical math sequence would be Algebra I, Geometry, Algebra II, or something equivalent, Integrated I, Integrated II, Integrated III. Those are not the only sequences, but those are really typical ones. The important thing to understand here is while there are thirty credits for both our local graduation requirements that you see in the blue box, and then thirty credits in math for the A through G box, which is in green, they're not necessarily the same courses, because all of our math courses don't necessarily meet those A through G requirements, that rigor level that's required. So for instance, in the little brackets at the bottom right, if a student took Business Math or Personal Finance, some of our special education math courses, Consumer Math, math like that, it's possible that it meets our local math requirement for graduation, but those courses don't meet UC CSU eligibility. So looking at that, it's very interesting. On the left-hand side, you can see that reminder there of Area C. And on the right-hand side, on the red and blue, we're looking at the number, not percentage, an actual number of kids that met A through G eligibility and then Area C. So I'm going to explain it really quickly. On the left, we can see three hundred of our students met that A through G eligibility that I spoke about before, right? Roughly forty percent of our kids. And then on the right, you can see comparing in the blue, four hundred and ninety-two of them actually met at least Area C. So it's really interesting, because we tend to think of math as like a hangup or a snag and the area that they don't meet. But for a hundred and ninety-two of our kids, it wasn't math that was the issue. They met the math requirement, and it was something else, perhaps world language, a VPA. Maybe they just didn't, you know, take enough electives, whatever it was that were in that G area. So we're going to dig into that a little bit. And this is something that we're currently looking at to give you an example of how we're using the data and the conversations that they're having at the schools. So on the left-hand side, across the bottom, you can see the trend kind of folds true that in all instances, more students met just Area C than the A through G requirements altogether. So we need to look at, you know, what's happening in our, in our, in our high schools. What courses are we offering? Are we offering some, like I was referring to earlier, that maybe aren't A through G, that they're not taking, that could make that number come up if we altered our course requirements a little bit? Or are we not getting kids through enough VPA? Are we not getting them through those two years of required lab sciences, and they're taking something else? We don't know yet, but these are the conversations that we're starting to have, and it's really interesting data, because we feel like we're doing good in this area, and we definitely are. The data shows it. But of course, there's room for growth, and it prompts some great conversations within our school sites. So another really powerful indicator is our CTE program, so Career and Technical Education. So as a whole, and you can see this broken down by subgroup here, we had one thousand six hundred and seventy-three students participate in some kind of CTE class last year. So a really big number of kids are participating. They're taking Floral and Culinary and all of these courses that we have to offer. And then you can see the breakdown by significant subgroup there in the graph. So I'll remind you that we have really robust offerings when it comes to CTE courses. The industry sectors are listed there. And sorry, the PDF got a little bit skewed there at the bottom. But we have twelve industry sectors covering a wide range of criteria. And within those sectors, we have twenty-eight pathways that they're taking all of these courses from. So taking a look by school, just a moment, at our top kind of pathways at each school. At AG, the top pathway was Patient Care. At Napomo, it was Agroscience. New Tech's most popular pathway with completers was Twenty-Nine. And then Lopez, I want to bring to your attention, had that new pathway of Cosmetology. So at the top, you can see that big number of three hundred students. That means they completed their pathway. And then the little numbers in parentheses represent the top pathways at each site. So to be a completer, CTE pathways often are two-sequence classes, but some of them are three. So depending on the pathway, you might have had to take an introduction, an intermediate course, and an advanced. Some of them are just two courses, intermediate and advanced only. You have to take them in the correct sequence, and then you are a CTE completer. So when we look at this a little bit, it becomes kind of clear, like we have a really high number of kids that are participating in CTE courses. But compared to that, we have a little bit low completion. Like the number of completers, the kids that are completing that two-series or three-series course, is a little lower than we'd like to see. If you'll recall, I came to a board meeting, maybe the middle of last year or this time last year, and we had done a lot of logistical course changes to the CTE offerings. Not the offerings themselves, but how we'd kind of do the bookkeeping and the naming conventions. So for instance, we had courses that the name didn't reflect the level that it was. So it was hard for counselors to tell, well, is this an intermediate course? Or is this the advanced one? Which resulted in kids taking some things out of sequence, which means they don't technically get to count as a completer. So we overhauled this, cleaned it up, named the courses exactly what they are. You know, Intro to Cosmetology, Intermediate Cosmetology, Advanced Cosmetology. So it's clear to the students, it's clear to the counselors, it's clear to everyone involved. This is the course sequence, and this is really clearly how you become a completer. So we're hoping that by cleaning up kind of this logistical concern, we'll increase the number of completers, because the kids are out there, they're taking the courses. We just want to make sure that we're guiding them accurately to get that full accolade. Okay, moving on to AP participation. And you can see the numbers down here by subgroup. So overall, we had roughly five hundred students take an Advanced Placement test, which is just under twenty percent of our kids at AG and Napomo. Those are the only two schools that we offer Advanced Placement testing at. New Tech has honors courses, but not AP courses. Some courses include AP Lit and Language, Calculus AB, Calculus BC, Spanish, Art History. And you can see we have a pretty high participation rate in our AP area as well. So kind of a long AP, we have dual enrollment courses, not exactly the same, but still rigorous courses. Overall, we have four hundred and seventy-seven students enrolled in a dual enrollment course for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So these courses include Patient Care, Ag Mechanics, Culinary, US History, Physics. You'll hear me name a lot of our CTE courses, but other courses as well. So students that are enrolled in these courses are concurrently earning high school credit and college credit at the same time. So four hundred and seventy-seven students received high school credit and college credit simultaneously. So dual enrollment, just so you're aware, so we can clarify, are not the courses that kids are taking outside the school day at Questa or Hancock. We refer to those as concurrent enrollment, because they're taking them in addition to their six or seven courses with us. It's only the courses on our high school campuses that count for dual enrollment that we're figuring this four hundred and seventy-seven student number in. All right, so wrapping up just a couple more things here. Remember that grades are still a great indicator. We've been looking at this several years now, prompted by the pandemic. And overall, we tend to be trending that we are providing students less Ds and Fs, more passing grades, which constitutes our high graduation rate. That's looking at it in high school. And then the trend really continues in middle school as well. Less Ds and Fs, more ABs and Cs, more passing grades, more students ultimately graduating. So finally, the last little data point here is the FAFSA. So like I said, the FAFSA isn't new for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. But the idea that we need to have all of our students actively complete the FAFSA or opt out of taking the FAFSA, but accounted for either way, is what was new for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, which resulted in higher completion rates by school, which is the ultimate goal of that governance. So to get more kids out there deciding that they qualify for financial aid and filling it out when maybe they wouldn't have in the first place. So great numbers here as well. So finally, that was a lot of data and hard to connect kind of all of the pieces. There's some really great indicators, but one is not necessarily connected to the other. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about them. But coming away with it, we can see that as a district, we have a high graduation rate. We have high participation across our programs in programs like CTE, AP, dual enrollment. And overall, as a district, we're really proud to provide enriching opportunities for students to ensure our kids leave college and career ready. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Question from board members. Ms. Mayor.
Do we know the percentage of students passing the AP test yet?
We do have most of that data in, and it is by AP course. So since this was a district overview, we didn't provide it in this report, but we do have most of it available already.
Any other questions? Ms. Martin.
With the A through G completion, that's with a grade of A, B, or C, correct?
Correct, yes. And that's a good point. And so passing with A through G doesn't mean a D. If you received a D in Algebra II or something, say, you would have to retake the course, because qualifying grades are A, B, and C mark only for A through G eligibility. Exactly.
And I would think that those AP results would be on the school profile for each school, which would probably be on their website.
That I am not positive.
They're not typically on the website, but we'd be happy to bring the AP results to Dr. Fawcett and/or to the board in a future report.
Oh, okay. They're not put on the profiles for the schools?
Not at this time.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. If any member of the public would like to comment on item number twelve, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment.
Well, I think it's great. I think that we're working really hard. I'm really impressed with Napomo with her A through G completion rate. And I think by really drilling down and seeing those differences that they've in the math, because the math is usually the gatekeeper. Algebra II is the big gatekeeper. And so the fact that we can see those kids who passed Algebra II, but they're not A through G, chances are it's just, you know, it didn't work in their schedule to get Spanish II in there or something. And so with a little urging from their counselor when they're working with their four-year plan, that we can edge those rates way up by looking at those kids who are... Because math really is the difficult one for most of them. And so I think that's wonderful that you did that analysis to see where we can help nudge our kids a little bit more.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Naomi Bernier.
May I have a copy of your presentation, please?
Yes.
We, we have a copy. Any other comments from board members? I will add my thanks as well. I know this, this data exists. Right, so to aggregate it for us in a nice snapshot that's digestible and lets us measure year over year is fantastic. So thank, thank you for this. This is really helpful.
Of course.
And if there are no other comments, I'm going to close item number twelve and move on to item number thirteen. Report Summer School and Extended School Year Participation 2023. I think it's the same team probably presenting.
It is, yes. This evening, you're getting a nice overview of some of the variety of projects that the Curriculum Department works on. And we wanted to take the opportunity. You've heard some about Summer Blast, which was very exciting and new for us. But we also wanted to share some details about participation in our high school program and our extended school year program. So Ms. Smith will be doing that this evening.
Yes, so just to reiterate, talking about our summer programs for 2023. So we had Summer Blast, which you got a lot of details on, but I'll reiterate a little bit. So remember, that's TK through sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade, so both that orange and yellow box, which is part of the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. And then we had kind of our traditional high school program for credit recovery and some advancement available this year for grades nine through twelve. And then, as always, we offered ESY or our Extended School Year, which serves students age three through twenty-two. And you can see the sites that all of the offerings were offered at this last summer. So starting with high school, we had two sessions. The first one being the fall session. So like if you needed to repeat whatever US history was first semester, you would take Session One, because they're coordinated. If you needed to redo or you needed to advance for second semester, you would take the spring session. And we offered both credit recovery and advancement opportunities. So nearly one thousand courses were completed overall, which is really impressive. This was our largest completion rate since we've really been tracking it in recent years. And that's, I believe, because we offered initial credit as well as credit recovery. We've kind of expanded our offerings a little bit. And we continue to offer those in-person options, PE and health as advancement. And we allow incoming eighth graders to take advantage of that too, which really boosts the numbers. And then also accessing it online via eGenuity. So with all of that increased access, we had nearly a thousand courses completed, which is really great. So Summer Blast, you've seen most of this, but just as a refresher, Harlow, Grover Beach, Dana, and AG all hosted our Summer Blast. You can see the really large numbers there, consisting of eighty-eight teachers, another almost fifty assistants, our lead teachers, secretaries, custodial staff, food service, bus drivers, on and on and on. Really great program, the biggest one we've ever done, and something totally different that we've ever done. And overall, parent feedback was really high, coming in at a four-point five, four-point five out of five. So the other big program was that Extended School Year for our special education students. We had this at Grover Beach, Napomo Elementary, Mesa PVA, AG, and An Oceano. Again, serving students age three to twenty-two, one hundred and seventy-five plus students, so a really robust program. Lots of support staff in this area, twenty-five teachers, twenty-two service providers, sixty pares, a couple of nurses, a couple of LVNs, and our lead teachers, and then lots more staff running around, keeping everything running for our Extended School Year program. So overall, very successful summer, lots of numbers, big planning happening. The planning for 2024 starts pretty much now. So this one wrapped up, and here we go again. And these are really successful structures. So we plan to offer something very similar for this upcoming school year. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Questions for board members. Ms. Penn.
How many students were not able to attend or they wanted to attend? Did we turn away students for the Summer Blast?
Summer Blast, we were able to accommodate virtually everyone. We enrolled people up through the summer, so that was good news. I would say the only place where we had some interest that we weren't able to accommodate is in those initial credit courses for high school, students that wanted to get ahead with health or possibly PE. But the good thing about that is that they could do it the next summer, so they could still fill out their regular schedule and complete health the summer after that. So we felt pretty good about our enrollment this year.
So the traditional model for the high school students, if they weren't able to get into those classes, do we offer anything for like a spring break or anything like that?
Spring break is not quite enough time to finish, finish the course with the kind of seat hours they'd need to complete it. But the courses that I was referencing were optional, and they weren't trying to recover credit. They were just trying to get ahead. So if an incoming freshman was not able to take health because the course filled up, they could work with their counselor, still not have health on their schedules, a ninth-grade student with the plan to take it between their ninth and tenth-grade year. And then we would prioritize at that point those older students to make sure they were able to complete it and do the same for PE.
On an event on the high school, do we have an agreement with online schools to give our kids that opportunity to take, you know, to go ahead in classes online?
So sort of. We have courses, our local courses, and we have a whole list of courses that are like, for instance, Questa does some enrichment, and Allan Hancock does some enrichment. And we have a list of approved courses. And a student still needs to go through the same process that they would if they were taking it during the school year, going to the counselor, getting a permit to enroll, I'm taking this class, what will it count for? So they have those same opportunities that they have in the summer during the school year. And then we use a program called opportunities that they have in the summer during the school year and then we use a program called edgenuity which is our own teachers teaching online courses that are A through G aligned that they can take for some of them for initial credit but lots of offerings for credit recovery
thank you
thank you Ms Van Ms Martin
how did the student aides work out
for summer blast yeah overall I think it was really successful I'm hoping that next summer we'll be able to do as you know campfire girl I don't know if you know that Mrs Martin but I'm hoping that next summer we'll be able to add in an opportunity for some of those summer aides to do a little bit of leadership training sort of like junior counselor at Camp Talkinico we could talk about that offline if you'd like but really great program and and so that's something they did get a lot of training from the lead teachers but it would be we were just imagining what would it be like if they had a short kind of daily meeting where they're doing a little bit of learning themselves because they're all our students in high school however so overall good success and we'll expand on it this coming year
well tying into what the AGHS rep said so they have this 250 they have this club like where they're trying to earn 250 community service hours that might be a great place for one of you guys to go with their lunchtime meeting to promo being volunteer leaders next summer
great idea thank you
get all those hours in because school service anything outside the school day should be community service for them
thank you Ms Martin any other questions from board members being none we'll go to public comment if any member of the public would like to comment on item number 13 now would be the time to do so seeing no movement in the boardroom we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment I I'll pick her it looks good it's exciting the numbers are really exciting about the participants participating in it I'm really excited about the initial credit opportunities as well that free up collectives for our students as well and that they're really to me I mean yes turning away anybody is never good news but it's good news to me that there's that much interest and so it was great to hear so thank you for this information this is really helpful
I just want to say one thing having been here a little bit it's it's wonderful to see how CTE programs have just grown just grown so much guys did a good job
thank you and with that we'll close this item and move on to item number 14 report approval federal funding consolidated application affectionately known as CONAP Ms Dixon
thank you President Stewart Mr Gimlin's going to come take this report and as he's getting prepared here this that you've had the CONAP to review in your packet and so we will be asking for approval this evening and Mr Gimlin will take you through a very brief overview of the content of the CONAP so you know what we apply for and how it helps us so with that I'll hand it over to him
thank you good evening everyone I'm here to present the consolidated application for federal funding it is affectionately known as the CONAP I want to thank Rachel Anderson who normally works in our office but she is afar but she's been my contact afar and helped me on it to complete it so so what is the CONAP the CONAP annually school districts submit the CONAP which documents participation in categorical funding programs provides assurances that our district is complying with the legal requirements of each program program entitlements are determined by formulas contained in the laws that created the programs and the dollar amount listed in the board item is a rejection of available dollars we won't know exact amounts until later in the fall but that's gives us a good idea of what we'll be working with why it's an accountability and a compliance system basically we report in there auditors at a certain point check our numbers and ensure that they are accurate so that we're fulfilling the legal requirements related to programs that are driven by state and federal categorical programs so categorical funding types so we get four major funding types title one is designed to improve the academic achievement of socioeconomically disadvantaged students we're supplementing what we do in our regular instructional program and we have site allocations to our schools based on their free and reduced lunch accounts title two is professional development we get funds for professional development to improve our teachers and our administrators and site leaders in title three is specifically designed for English learners to help them meet our challenging state standards and then also learn English and then title four is designed to address well-rounded improve school conditions known as safe and healthy and then improve the use of technology to improve the academic achievement and digital literacy of our students so those are the four major types of categorical fundings that we receive and also report on through the consolidated application for federal funding so with that I'll take any comments or questions you may have
thank you Mr Gimlin questions from board members Ms Martin
so hi
hi
I'm always fascinated by the how we have to include the nonprofit private schools in the CONAP and I was really surprised at the enrollment when I looked at that 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 actually Coastal Christian is bigger than St Patrick's that growing up with my kids growing up here that was not the case 20 years ago so that's really different where St Patrick's only showing like 30 kids per grade so when you say that the school was added with an no which is on page two of two does that mean that we're not giving them any money
we have some of our schools that we reach out to we we have a process where we reach out to our private schools some accept the dollars and then we meet with them through a process to determine equitable services for their school some we reach out to and we don't hear back from so not even though we allocate to the private schools some of them use the funds and some of them don't but we're involved in a process right now of reaching out to them to provide equitable services for students that are our students they reside within our boundaries
so they are to add on to what Mr Gimlin was saying excuse me Mrs Martin yes we provide services for those schools through title funding as appropriate so school added means that we've served them before in the past so this is our same group of three schools Coastal Christians St Patricks and Valley View that we serve every year
one more question I I always enjoy looking at the list to see the percentage frame reduced and this was the first year I really noticed that branch was at 35% which meant they crossed over to the title one world is this the first year or did I miss it last year
we've been able to serve them based on prior board action with title one dollars because they were above 30% threshold in the past but these increasing numbers at the sites where we've seen them have really been due to how we do income verification through our early you know our services the beginning of the year so by doing that on data confirmation it's increased the numbers for the percentages for most of our schools but this is new information for branch that they're up to 35%
and 35% is the threshold correct so the only schools that we have that haven't met that threshold are Shell Beach and Ocean View I'm just seeing that that's on page eight if you're interested it's under title one party school allocations that's new for us just to know when we're visiting schools and stuff that they have more need than they used to and it's really hard to be qualified for frame reduced I mean that's you know your parents can both Margaret Carlos Jr and you don't qualify you know interesting information thank you
thank you Ms Martin Ms Van
so when you're applying for all this is it based on the numbers that are previous year or is it current year does that make sense or
so the accountability system basically you're reporting on years in the past so you have 24 month reports you have 12 month reports you have 39 month closeout reports so it's you're straddling many different years so it's tough to answer that question you are when you're projecting what 23 24 yeah you're looking at what our numbers will be like this year
have we ever estimated too high and got too much money and then we had to pay it back
well that's why we we generally make a conservative estimate when we project for the sites because in the spring we gave categorical budgets to our schools allocated title one and El Cap dollars but we did that based on a conservative estimate of where we thought our numbers would be and then we revise those as we have more information so later in the fall we'll have more information and we can it's always good to be able to say hey we got a little bit more money for you but you don't want to go the opposite way
well I yeah as I say I've been having a board meeting since 1990 and I've never seen branch calls I forgot ever you know and I fought to get Paulding to qualify under the feeder principal when I was a parent on the school site council there so is we have a lot of need in our affluent community but it's what's so crazy is you know as a crow flies we have mansions and we have families that have so many needs so we all just need to be empathetic to that the fact that every school has both ends of the spectrum every school
and Shell Beach and Ocean View are not far off every year they've been in the title one pot and then fallen out of it so every year it's we're determining where they are in that 35 line
any other questions from board members on this item seeing none we'll go to public comment if any member of the public would like to comment on item number 14 now would be the time to do so seeing no movement in the boardroom we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment seeing no comment we are being asked for approval so I will entertain a motion
approval federal funding consolidated application
second motion by Candell second by Santos roll call vote please
Ms Candell
yes
Ms Santos
yes
Ms Mayor
yes
Ms Martin
yes
Ms Naomi Bernier
yes
Ms Van
yes
Mr Stewart
aye
thank you motion passes
thank you thank you Mr Gimlin which brings us to item scheduled for discussion possible action item number 15 approval of the second reading of revision of board policies administrative regulations exhibits and bylaws Dr Fawcett
thank you President Stewart on August 22nd 2023 the board was presented with the first reading of the following board policies administrative regulations exhibits and bylaws that are recommended for revision in the second reading following board action these revisions will be added to the online portal and the public can access that online portal via our website this evening they're before you for the second reading and it is the recommendation that you approve them tonight
thank you Dr Fawcett questions from board members seeing none we'll go to public comment Mr Bischof did you want to comment on this item or this is for not on the agenda great perfect great thank you so we'll open up for public comment if any member of the public would like to comment on item number 15 now would be the time to do so seeing no movement in the boardroom we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment
we need page numbers but I already mentioned that to you
get them on there next time
other comments from trustees seeing none we are being asked to approve this second reading so I'll entertain a motion for approval
I move approval second reading division of board policies administrative regulations and exhibits and bylaw
the motion by Martin second by Naomi Bernier roll call vote please
Ms Martin
yes
Ms Naomi Bernier
yes
Ms Candell
yes
Ms Van
yes
Ms Santos
yes
Ms Mayor
yes
Mr Stewart
aye
thank you motion passes
thank you which brings us to item number 16 a first reading of the revision of board policies and administrative regulations Dr Fawcett
thank you President Stewart our divisions continue to work hard in bringing you up to date and current policies these changes are based on changes in law and government code and they have been fully vetted by both the departments and myself and they're here before you tonight for the first read and they'll be brought forward at the next board meeting for the second reading
thank you Dr Fawcett questions from board members seeing none we'll go to public comment if any member of the public would like to comment on item number 16 now would be the time to do so seeing no movement in the boardroom we're going to close close public comment and bring it back to the board for comment seeing no comment this is the first reading so we will be bringing it back at the next board meeting for a second reader reading and possible consideration for approval which leads us to item number 17 which we need the paperwork on we don't have the reporting out language up here with us great so this is the 17 is action student expulsions student discipline case numbers 22 dash 23-24 001 and 23-24 002 and I will turn it over to Mrs Martin
the Board of Education finds there's cause to expel student case 23-24-001 from all schools in the district for violation of education code section 48900 it is further moved that the board adopt the recitals agreements rehabilitation plans and read admission review dates as set forth in the August 24th 2023 agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion and suspension of expulsion this was the first case we heard in your notebook
you want to read them both and we'll just
uh no because we want to vote on them separately just
great
let's vote on them separately so I made the motion second
great so motion by Martin second by Mayor on student discipline case number 23-24-001 roll call vote please
Ms Martin
yes
Ms Mayor
yes
Ms Naomi Bernier
yes
Ms Candell
yes
Ms Van
yes
Ms Santos
yes
Mr Stewart
aye
thank you motion passes
thank you
the Board of Trustees finds there's cause to expel student case 2324002 from all schools in the district for violation of education code sections 48900 C it is further moved that the board adopt the recitals agreements rehabilitation plan and read admission review date as set forth in the August 28th 2023 agreement and stipulation for immediate expulsion second
motion by Martin second by Santos roll call vote please
Ms Martin
yes
Ms Santos
yes
Ms Mayor
yes
Ms Naomi Bernier
no
Ms Candell
yes
Ms Van
yes
Mr Stewart
aye
thank you motion passes
thank you which brings us to a public comment on items not on tonight's agenda but within the purview of the district I do have two speaker cards but if anybody other than these two speakers would like to speak you could fill out a blue slip now that'd be great first up will be Eric Johnson followed by Paul Bischoff
good evening Eric Johnson I work at Paulding Middle School and Mrs Meeger thank you for attending Paulding's Back to School Night I appreciated your comments on Heckman's high-tech hamburgers that was pretty cool yeah and Mr Ike Burger welcome back I seem to remember that you and I had a little less gray when we were at your your time at Paulding also but welcome back to Lucie Omar along with many of you I attended the beginning of the year kickoff at the Clark Center and Superintendent Fawcett appreciated your opening comments and really the focus on the power team so thank you for that our keynote speaker also spoke of the importance of working together and taking the time to celebrate success so when Paulding's 2023 CASP scores were released we learned that our ELA scores are the highest in Paulding's history and I thought wow that is that is really cool and we need to celebrate this but when I inquired at my side about how this success was going to be celebrated oh the response was rather vague so I'm here this evening to take the time to celebrate this success and offer a very public congratulations to Paulding's teaching staff and to recognize the efforts of Paulding's outstanding ELA department Emily Green Jesse Doster Sam Acosta and Gina Fash thank you well done ladies Paulding is a better place because of you thank you
let's make sure the minutes reflect that so the Paulding staff can see it
this direction to Mrs Dwight
yeah
now next up is Mr Bischof
good evening President Stewart and trustees my name is Paul Bischof thank you President Stewart for being in the 95th percentile of people that have pronounced my name properly I appreciate that I'm coming here tonight to ask a favor and we all obviously it's pretty fresh in our minds the the covid pandemic and the response that we had before so I'm sure we've all seen the reports of the new covid variants and the possibility that this might turn into something and so I hope I'm wrong I hope it doesn't turn into anything and we get to continue on with what we have going right now but in case it does I'm humbly here to humbly ask you for a favor That you would make um, your decisions in the next few months uh, based on the kids' wellbeing and the data we know today in mind. Uh, we've all seen the studies that have come out, come out now that show the infinitesimally small number of instances that COVID was spread at fully open schools. We have all seen this. We've seen the studies and frankly, confirmation from our guts, our collective guts, that masks don't do anything to slow the spread of a respiratory virus. And lately, somewhat recently, we've seen studies showing the harm to us when we do wear masks. We have seen this. And of course, we've seen what harm the prior lockdowns did. To kids, not only the academic performance, we've all seen that. But to mental health as well, these kids' mental health. And of course, if we did know, nobody would deny that if we saw massive health benefits to society and it did bring some limited harm to kids, we'd probably decide as a society that maybe, you know, we, we're going to make a decision based on the data we know at that time to lock down and, and appreciate those benefits, but then, you know, realize the harm that would come to the kids. But the data are in today. We know this. We not only saw no health benefit, rather we saw excess mortality harm to society and academic performance harm to kids and mental health harm to kids. I mean, that's quite a negative trifecta. And we all know this. We didn't have the data the first time. We were flying blind in understanding the fog of war. It's hard to know exactly what was going on the first time through. I'm almost done. We didn't know the information perfectly, but today, September fifth, two thousand twenty-three, we don't have that difficulty today. We know so much more than we knew before. So please, if these variants do gain emotional traction, please protect our kids. You are their leaders. You are our leaders. Lead us in the wellbeing and protection of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bischoff. Uh, those are the all, all the speaker cards I have. If any other member of the public would like to comment on items not on tonight's agenda, but within the purview of the district, now would be the time to do so. Seeing no movement in the boardroom, we're going to close public comment on items not on the agenda and move to adjourn this uh, evening's meeting. Our next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. And with that, we are adjourned at eight eleven PM.